I did. Meal, mom, food. You'll share it for me? Kind of ask what I need to do. See my city. Email their website or whatever. Who's the outlet? River out there.
Believe.
You're checking.
No, no. The, uh, the lean first. I don't want to suspect you like that. I see what you're trying to do. Come as you are. That.
Dee, are you, uh, filming tonight? Is that filming?
Some of the internet is down and down.
I'm all right. How are you?
I thought we had that fixed last week. No, no, I thought we had that fixed. Council members can contact you most periodically. So it's a dear guest. So. We need to get that fixed. We need to get a formal something to them now. Let's make sure that happens. This is a pretty thing.
Next concert. The cash flow.
We normally check.
Um, my parents. Next time, let me know because I like them. You like company. I love concerts, but my wife doesn't like concerts.
I have a cricket. I've learned how to use it. Oh, good, good.
It's cool.
No, not the, it depends on what I got going on. Sometimes I'll eat breakfast and I'll be like, oh, I'm going to make a cake.
Okay. I'm getting fat.
Maybe they're. Don't eat.
President. He's kind of like, um, in place. First thing in the world is to be a good.
Sure. So remember.
I think the same with, you know, like this little song. Because we went to our family class on Sunday. It was mostly cold.
Cold? Yeah, my brother. I said cold.
It's so long together. Hold on to it, man.
It's, uh, it's, uh, it's, uh, balance is a lot.
That's right. That's right. No, but we were practicing nights and stuff that we learned. I mean, I think it like just a little bit of, you know.
How would?
Yeah.
They'll be balanced, they'll be, they'll be very simple. Well, they said they took them off because, uh, all the people were. How would? How would? How would? Yeah, the.
I mean, yeah.
Uh, we're not getting.
Yeah.
That's. Is it? That's a dollar back. Good by.
I'm just. Yeah, we don't use the. We used to break them go stop. But we've gone. We did it almost every day.
I mean, you know.
Yeah. Just go get that.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not his wife. Okay, cool. My mother just makes her own. It was really strange.
What are your discussion? Passion. I thought maybe it was done three and four.
First case.
Okay. You're nice. I don't know.
I can't. I can't. Yeah. He was. He's.
Well.
Oh. Sports and office.
Well, they come for us all together. They'll be there to be inspired. If the weather, those just, um. I should figure it out. If we like.
Well. It's a little cool.
It's so good.
I put some.
Oh, we went through. I said. I heard.
I wish it was.
It didn't be the first four minutes. It was good.
I don't control it going. So I just sit in front of it. So I can go. Going out. They did that. But. I think everybody's. You have to become. And they told them. I was like. Will they want to? This is one name. Let's see. Just have to. I don't know. I don't know. I'm sure they could. I would have to give the. I would have to get the whole amount of the danger. Add the talk. I don't know. Or have to go, I have to go out like a show. You have like, just like a, like have these weird timers in that. But, uh. It's.
The house.
Dee, you need to get that beer on. Fill one. What's that?
Does this?
For taste? For taste, yeah. For taste. There's still tickets to the traditional.
Definitely.
Are you still around? I saw Duran Duran was in concert. Did you go?
Yeah, he did. They used to be one of my favorite bands.
That was, that was. I had sixth grade. It was like when I first started thinking about girls. That was then.
Sun.
That was good. That's, I learned a little about Duran Duran. At that age, I was more of a, a harder rock guy. I did it at those ages. I like sun. I like sun. Like I like a little bit of AC. That's about as hard as I like the. I do like Iron Maiden. I do like Iron Maiden, but probably. I don't know. Yeah. If I can understand the words, I'm okay with it. That's a nine percent of that. And I can understand. It was a lot of sort of computerized now. It's gonna go to the chair, but. I think go to the chair, but I don't know what it does like. I'm glad.
My father. I think your role takes, uh, directors. I found.
I'm trying to set up the.
Do you have, do you have one third?
No, I mean. You try. Can you see?
Yes, I guess.
You know. The dresser? It's all. I'm not. I know what's. Okay. Could you?
Yeah.
Caution. No. Yeah. That's good. That's good. That's good.
Good. Yeah.
What do you have to do this? You know, I'm. So we have. Oh. Well. When Matt Hill started, I was like, oh, I don't know. I'm like, okay. That's okay. We must do the. It was.
I think. Yeah. Yeah.
I think.
Although. Yeah.
Okay. Have you done some of the ways? Yeah, I know.
That's what.
Yeah, I know. I know. I know. Yes. Oh.
Time is eighteen thirty-six. Normally call the, uh, these special city council meetings for June thirteenth, one twenty-three to quarter. I'd like to remind everyone that we are streaming. For those that are online, please use your microphones. Please keep them on. If you have a question for staff, please wait till they get to the microphone so that way they can answer. Be ready for us with a pledge allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Wait, anybody signed up to speak?
Yes, we do. Terry Goodlove? Good evening, City Council. I'm only, uh, wanted to speak on a couple of things tonight. And, and one is just to, you know, I pray every night for our city and our city council that you guys can do the right thing. And more importantly, to bring some decorum to your public office. It's been a shock to me, some of the antics and the comments that may especially. I'm gonna, I'm gonna call you out, Scott. I'm just in disbelief that as a believer, you can treat another human like you have treated some of the other, the mayor and other council members. As a believer in Jesus Christ, I think that is not acceptable in any shape or form. And I think you're a believer. I want to think you're a believer, but your actions and previous council members do not take that. And I'm sorry, I believe that. It's really upsetting. But beyond that, I think there's hope for us. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to be the leader in that, bringing the decorum back to the public office here. Because it's up to you, each one of you, to be able to do that. To hold your tongue and not speak ill will of other council members or be degrading and hateful, honestly. But beyond that, I wanted to discuss, uh, talks about item six I. Under discussion possible, answer, ratify, repeal, avoidable votes by previous council members. Um, Jen Thompson. As a convicted felon, she shouldn't have been on the council in the first place. But I'm gonna say ratify her vote, her actions, and move forward. There's no reason why we should go back. And when we look at that, go forward, let's make good decisions, move it forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goodlove.
Thank you.
Gabrielle Maes. Okay. Good evening, everybody. The last couple of agendas, I've seen some really positive things, um, in regards to interviewing, reviewing resumes, you know, just things like that to get this city back on track. And what I'd like to remind you all is several times it has been brought up that the people in those seats, they work for you, right? They're here for the city, they're here for the council. It's their responsibility to work at the local council. The one thing, and I'm a little sad that AC is not here because this comment is directed towards him, is the last three years, we've gone through this impressive phenomenon called the Great Resignation, where many people would up and quit their jobs just because of the bosses that they worked for, just because the environment wasn't right, just because the benefits weren't good. And so I think it's important that as we're moving forward and as we're hiring these new people and as we're putting these people up the seats, put the right people there. But not only put the right people there, make sure that they have the tools to succeed and make sure that they're in an environment where they can succeed. If you're putting the right people in that seat and they're reporting to somebody who is tirating over them and not giving them the power to do the things that they need to do, there's no point in putting them there. You're just gonna lose them. So that is something that as you guys are interviewing, as you're reviewing resumes, just keep that in mind. Make sure that you guys are the leaders that you would want to work for. When you're seeing these openings, would you recommend your spouse, yourself, your sons and daughters? Would you recommend them to work for you? If that answer is no, then you need to do a leadership reflection and get yourself back on the right page. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maes.
Nova Olson. So I just wanted to say that the people who are sitting here are the people who have responsibly taken a leadership role in this city. I'm not surprised that you four are sitting here and there's two people who are not sitting here. I, I'd like to say thank you, Scott, for being the kind of person who's willing to be passionate about what he's doing. You know, I didn't see any type of behavior, you know, like yelling at me. I haven't seen any behavior like obscene gesture from the mayor. So I want to thank you for being passionate, for stepping up to the plate and trying to get things done. Maybe some people don't always agree with people who are passionate, but I can certainly respect that because I'm the person, kind of person is, you know, for me, what you see is what you get. That's the good thing. The bad thing is what you see is what you get. And that's mine. Right? Because some of us get things done and some other people don't necessarily like the methodology. But I do want to thank you guys for showing up here. I want to thank you for, I mean, you Roger, you Mike, uh, Michael, for sticking with this through some pretty tough times. I know it's been tough, right? So, um, I am really looking forward to us continually getting down into the mitty gritty, even if it's tough, to finding out what money has been spent, what money is. I'm really concerned about the fact that we have a twenty thousand dollar budget and what nearly sixty thousand has already been spent or, you know, upwards, close to that has already been spent on legal fees. So I, my hope is that we get this budgeting under control, that we start really being transparent. You know, that's what I, that's what I ran on for school board. That's what I hope for for everybody in a public position is for transparency, for responsibility, fiscal responsibility. So thank you guys for stepping up to the plate in a really difficult job right now.
Thank you, Ms. Maes.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. Thank you for having so many meetings. Uh, it's appreciated. It's nice to see the business of the people moving forward as needed based on the needs of the city. I'm gonna cite a couple of things here to you. Um, United States Constitution, a body shall take no action abridging the freedom of speech or the right of the people to petition the board or redress a grievance. From the Texas Constitution, citizens shall have the right in a peaceful manner to assemble together for their common good and to apply to those invested with the powers of government for redress of grievances or other purposes by petition, address, or remonstrance. And from Texas Government Code, a body may not prohibit public criticism of the body, including criticism of any act, omission, policy, procedure, program, or service. This does not apply to public criticism that would be prohibited by law. So why am I bringing these up? Government, the way you guys are conducting the last few meetings, is exactly how government was meant to be conducted, hundred percent. Government is not meant to be pretty. It's not meant to be vocated. There's a difference between nice and kind. I got this from a sermon since everybody wants to bring up God and how he's applied. Nice would have been for Abraham Lincoln not to do the emancipation proclamation during civil war or to declare blacks free. It was kind, but it did not result in anything nice. It was horrible. The largest amount of American casualties. But the end result and where it gets you is what the, what the goal should be. We're not here to be nice. You guys shouldn't be either. There's people in here that will go behind closed doors in a team of eight and come up with a, a complete hundred percent unified decision to show unity because their, their intent is for how you look and how they look to be false and not accurate. The people are supposed to see government at work. What you guys are doing is a hundred percent how it's supposed to be conducted. Go research any of the founding fathers and what they said it would take to preserve our democracy and our way of life. You guys swore to defend that in all your oaths. So don't listen to people that are misled through organizations that mislead them in how to conduct the people's business. You guys are doing it appropriately and I applaud you for it. Thank you very much. Continue.
Hey, Lili. Good evening. Greg Cooper stole my speech. I was going to read to y'all from House Bill twenty-eight forty, and this is regarding the Texas Open Meetings Act and public forum. A governmental body may not prohibit public criticism of the governmental body, including criticism of any act, omission, policy, procedure, program, or service. This subsection does not apply to public criticism otherwise prohibited by law. In response to what Terry Goodlove said, she's a school board member. She should be fairly knowledgeable about the Texas Open Meetings Act. Um, but she fails to realize that we don't have to be nice about policy. Um, this is business. This is not personal. And so I just wanted to remind you all of that. And I.
Just like, just like, I'm sorry. You're leaning on the mic.
Oh, did I turn it off?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Sorry. Did it, did any of that? Anyways, okay, so twenty-eight forty. We don't have to be nice here. We can speak freely about what we believe, the policy to be, and as citizens and taxpayers. Um, it's our job to hold our government accountable and to speak about the policies and procedures that we would like to see happen. Um, I also want to applaud you guys on the frequency of meetings that y'all have been having due to the state of our city and for y'all really doing what needs to be done to get this city up and running, I have on you guys. I know it's a lot of work to have this many meetings. And so I just want to tell you guys to keep it up, keep doing what you're doing. And, um, like Greg said, we don't have to be nice, we have to do business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maes.
Dee, Rich?
Evening, Councilmembers. I was, uh, not intended to speak tonight, but, um, upon hearing that Jennifer Thompson is a convicted felon, I did have to step up with some information for you. I'm looking at a criminal background track, criminal background check for Jennifer Rae Thompson, dated May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three. It says that, uh, national criminal watch list is clear. County criminal Johnson County is clear. County criminal Parker County clear. County criminal Tarrant County clear. Federal criminal. Date base is clear. National criminal record search clear. Multi-state sex offender search clear. FBI terrorist watch list clear. OFAC global sanctions list clear. Not sure what that is. Federal, state, and local wanted fugitives clear. So I'd be really curious to know what felony she allegedly was convicted of. Because according to this background check, this, a few weeks ago, there is no such criminal conviction on her record. Uh, I thought that would be critical for you to know at this juncture. Especially if that's the basis that, uh, some people were wanting to invalidate her avoidable votes on item six I. If that's the logic that, well, she wasn't allowed to serve here in the first place because of this felony conviction, uh, so we need to void her votes, then I, I find that to be provably false, provably false and potentially slanderous assertion.
Slander.
Thank you. Thank you, good morning.
I wish she means an apology. That's all.
Eighteen fifty-one, I'd like to close the public comment section of the meeting. Section two is proclamations. We currently do not have any of those this month. Consent agenda, there is no consent agenda. We have no public hearings. This will go into executive session presented with section five-five-one dot zero seven one, consultations with attorney, consultation with interim city attorney to seek advice of said attorney about pending legal matters.
Mayor Procham, can we do five B first? In the executive session, five B.
We'll also be going into executive session for five-five-one dot zero seven four, the Texas Government Code, discussion on the employment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer, interview for the municipal attorney position. So this is going to executive session at eighteen fifty-two.
What's with my brain?
I'm only back at the evening coffee shop, so if you're gonna get a ham, please. Where are you?
I need a good ne- I need a good name. I thought a ground in pound, but people won't get that. Ground zero? Been there, done that? Old Godly Coffee Company? O- old co- old Godly Coffee Company?
Over three convene and open session at twenty-one thirty-six. So, with y'all's approval, I'd like to go down six D to six C. We're gonna zoom all of the public works here. So, then I'll give it.
Yes, sir. I'm okay with this. Go, go let him do it. We were talking about it last week.
Oh, man, yes, yes.
Yes, sir, we're all good. Yeah, I'm good. Love drink. Don't thank you, but for sure.
Say, don't want to say it all.
No, I'm ready to go for it. We need it. We made that correct here last week.
Do we have a process?
Yeah, is there some stuff right here in the back? Uh, which is? This is for the backhoe? One is for the backhoe, one is for the car.
So just real quick, since they are two separate agenda items?
Yeah.
We'll call it a agenda item and talk about it. Think about, move to the next one.
That's just the line six A, discussion of possible action regarding R F D for legal services. You've been presented an R F D in your packet. I don't know if y'all had time to review it, just, just a request or proposal. Our current city attorney is designing, and we are looking for a new one. There is something later on in the agenda for possibly keeping them on through the month of June. We'll discuss that then.
I'm gonna recommend with your, everybody's, uh, agreement that you table that, I suppose, for now. Or P, so you're gonna interview, uh, potential other candidates? Or, whatever you gotta wanna do. This is a request for people who come and talk to us. This is not a request about this, about this particular attorney. So, saying we wanna have people come talk to us.
That's true.
That's true. So we can, we can't handle it.
That's true.
We need to act on it. This one, uh...
So this would be basically that have your running for another, um, you can?
That is correct. That lists all the minimum qualifications, what the duties would entail. It is literally, basically a job description, but you're seeking proposals from professionals, uh, in that, with the intent that whoever's chosen will be under a professional services agreement.
This is, this is what we run into second team.
That is correct.
We'll have to edit it. It says sealed proposals to be accepted by Mayor Acey D until et cetera. Blank DM on June, line twenty-three, proposal may be submitted by mail or personally, bottom of the draft.
Yeah, any edits you want to make through that, just whatever motion you make, if you want to approve it, I'm just put those edits in your motion.
Kathleen, do we need to get mail at this address, two hundred West Road Road Street, or does it need a P O box?
It should go to P O box. What about maybe change on? So I'm making a motion to accept the R F D with the changes. I do the submission and response to change, uh, Mayor. To Roosman, if you want to accept him.
Say, sorry, third this time?
That one, okay? And then to change the address, have the fiscal address, change that to the P O box. Any other changes? Any other changes we seen you made to add to that?
What's in the P O box?
Twenty-seven.
So I have a motion to make to accept the R F D with the changes of changing Mayor Acey D to the city secretary in attention line to the city secretary in the two hundred West Road Street to P O box twenty-seven. Do I have a second?
Seven.
Got a motion by Miss B, and Miss February Gibbs, and a second by Mr. Yarborough.
Aye.
Miss?
Yes.
Motion passage unanimously. Item six D, discussion of possible action on approval of a contract to grant a backhoe. In your packet, you will find a email from Sunbelt Rentals that outlines the rental agreement that the public works director negotiated. Would y'all like me to engage the ones who are possibly discussing, or do you want to discuss between those two?
I'm okay with this. This is consistent with what I rent for four weeks. And you get on it, come on. You say this is fifty-year driving? Yeah, this is prices.
May I ask, Parker, did you turn on the microphone, please?
No.
Okay.
I'm sorry. These, these figures are consistent. I get a little bit better deal with it. I rent stuff a lot more, maybe, than I'd that pressure.
How long are we, uh, proposing for in this one?
So if you rent for a week, let's say you rent for two weeks, you might as well rent for four weeks, it costs a hundred dollars more. We haven't chosen where our current backhoe will go to get fixed. So I would say probably the four weeks, because that's your best thing to your book. If it's down for three weeks, it's better to have that than pay for two weeks and then you lose another week.
And we can extend that if we need.
May I only go with the four weeks, the, the rate to charge over again, per day, per week, per month?
Well, I'm okay with it without falling down with the-
The only thing I see on there is the rental protection plan for two hundred eighty-five dollars right here. I would assume that the city has insurance on all of our equipment, so it should cover that.
Yes, sir, we do.
So we could probably get that taken off and reduce it by two hundred eighty-five dollars.
Do they require it? Is that?
No, not if we have our insurance. We'll set it to the backhoe with a copy of that insurance.
I guess I make a motion to accept the proposal submitted, or the quote for the backhoe for the main department. Uh, twenty-six to oh eight, twenty-nine, minus the two, they dropped the contract with the waste supplier, and they lost to take it off.
Uh, certainly, sir. Got a motion by Miss February Gibbs, a second by Mr. Tony Wilson.
Aye.
Aye.
Passage unanimously. Item six C, discussion of possible action regarding a contract for the rental of a vehicle for public works. So Enterprise gave us a quote for a truck rental. Ended up being drastically more than what we thought was going to be. So on the last page, they're exploring eighty dollars a day, four hundred dollars a week, or sixteen hundred dollars a month. You're given a lot of miles per day, week, a month. And this is where you're gonna be answering the question of if you exceed those miles, because you may be charged twenty cents per extra mile.
Do you want to call? Oh, we think you would, Mr. District Attorney. We have nothing that would solve this problem in the city, you know, vehicles? Not know what he mentioned last week before we went to the meeting. Car, one of the cars was eight, four thousand, or what, almost five thousand dollars to get it running. They've been setting up for six or three years. I don't spend four thousand dollars on a car just to set it up. And if that means his own vehicle, personal vehicle, or maybe, didn't he say only have one car, or one truck that was running?
I think so.
Then he just used his own? I was just wondering if we had anything, any equipment, if we're talking departmentally, could be borrowed, maybe for a while. Get off the internet. We got anything? Your car? All right, they're buying their cars on the last lane too.
Uh, and we told our truck has it, I don't think it should have started for six or seven years, so.
Will we make that, just, uh, start it and have somebody come look at it if we have to? Get either reverse on motors, or just the diesel come down and take a gander at it, or call somebody?
Yeah.
If we decide to sell it or auction it off, every charge would be a lot more money.
Kevin, can you hear me? Kevin, you have to unmute yourself. Kevin, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
I guess it isn't gonna work, so I have you on speakerphone for us to discuss.
Okay.
You don't have any questions for him? Uh, we're going, we've already decided on the backhoe. We're going for the rental vehicle, I M C right now.
Okay.
How many quotes did you get for your, for, for the truck? Just this one, or talk to somebody else?
I got an Enterprise fleet, which is the one that y'all got. It was the lowest. I've got one from the Enterprise rental, Lumbering Cleaver. They want fifteen thousand for three months. And then I got one from Hurst, uh, Rentals, and they want sixteen thousand for a month. Uh, my only issue is with this one, they're worth sixteen hundred a month. They're only giving us three thousand miles, so twenty-seven a mile, let's just say we do three thousand. Let's just say we do about three thousand miles a month. We're looking at about six thousand dollars for three months. And that's not count us putting fuel in it if we, if we accidentally call the gander about putting any equipment or anything like that on it. So, um, I mean, that's the only point I can get, looking at a, just, uh, I'll rent five vehicles from, from a dealership, and I gotta go for that, so it's five thousand. But I mean, it's up to y'all, I mean, I don't know if it's like, if it'd be worth spending six thousand dollars for every month. But we need to do something because we're gonna have, coming up here next week and a half or two weeks, we're gonna have to start doing, uh, meter reads again. Meter reads gonna take me about one and a half, two days to get done, and that's a lot of driving across the city to get it done. And I don't wanna pull muscle personnel off their job to pay up, to get knocked out.
You don't have any additional questions?
Is this for a truck?
The Enterprise rental agreement is for, can you explain what kind of vehicle it is, as in if they're getting a large?
It's a small truck. It's just like, it's e- it's either be a, a Chevrolet Colorado or a Aston pickup. It's up to what they have. It's not three quarters on it, so it won't be able to pull any big trailers or anything. And from what I was told, is we gotta do any kind of live work now because of the investigation going on with Mr. Troy. So I will probably not contact Mr. Troy anywhere, so, I mean, it'll be a small truck, Ranger Chevrolet Colorado, it's a V-six, sat 1 truck.
So basically, not a work truck, just something to get you point A, point B?
Correct, correct.
You don't have any more questions? All right, thank you, Kevin. I'll give an analysis.
All right. Thank you, council. I hope y'all are very nice. All right, good, good.
Feel better, buddy?
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Hope you did that job.
When, when we're gonna talk, pull the trigger, or do something with the police cars going to Enterprise? Going into, we're gonna go to the grid with them, and if so, can we get a truck for the city, for the, uh, for the Works Department, or we do that?
So yes, the Enterprise that we've been talking about? So yes, the Enterprise, that we've been talking about, was Republic Works, fire, and the police department? But whether that happens or not is up to the council. If we want to do that, we can, we have to nail down, try to see if they, if you send us the information that Enterprise sent you for it.
Yes.
So, it's just us pulling the trigger, seeing if it's cost effective, if we have enough budget for this, for this, for our vehicle, alright?
Yeah, I have two questions. One, have we talked to school about doing the PD that thing we talked about, where we've lowered the price, because they're gonna be getting PD cars also?
That would have been mayor or secretary thing, I don't know.
Do you know what they asked, anything?
No, my heart, I don't know any information about that.
Okay. And then two, if we do not have an accurate budget, and we do not, um, the things that we provided, there's a lot of blanks. We have no idea what kind of budget we have to work with. So how do we know if we can afford sixteen thousand or seventeen thousand? We have no clue what kind, I mean, to, anyway, we don't even hope we have a dollar, I mean, it's just, so how can we make a decision without accurate numbers of what we have to pay?
I agree with you. Stephanie, do you know what all we have in our different funds?
Uh, yes, sir, I think we would be okay doing that, I don't think it would put us in a bind as far as financially goes.
What, what figure, how many would be okay?
The, I believe the sixteen thousand, if y'all wanted to go ahead and, and film this contract.
So, just a dumb question, the truck, I think I asked this before, but I can't remember. The city vehicle, that is the. Yeah, that, that, is it right?
Is, is not.
Is not.
But, uh, Mr. Corneal, if y'all want us to call some out, we look at it, or do that?
How long is it against the flip screen, you said? That's been a five years?
Time is gone.
No. I didn't know it was something that's like in a year.
We need to see if we, if it starts, but, uh, will you, not be able to depend on it?
So we're gonna need to run back where we are now.
I'm, I make a motion that we accept this deal with the, uh, exception to the miles, if there's any miles, if there's any driving to Fort Worth, or Dallas, whatever reason, it might be done in this truck, we fire. We work it to what we do not go over three thousand miles per month, which shouldn't be a problem.
Is that, is that something we should require, and that way, if anything, they say go over, they need to use the other vehicle?
Yeah, if they're going on a walk, they're running the things, if we get a show going, a hundred miles on ways, a hundred miles back, and then you drive the other vehicle. If it's, I assume it's capable of driving that far.
Second that motion.
Got a motion and a second, without any further discussion. So there is one other vehicle. The old emergency, the red emergency management truck. We, fire department's using it right now, but it is, they have, the chief has one, and then someone else has the other one, so it's good, but. We could take that potentially and move it over until we figure out if we're buying, we're doing Enterprise. So that one fifty, city owned asset, kind of covered on the back, so they can put tools back there without it getting stolen.
How's it being utilized right now?
Longest time, it always sat right back here, and it was David wrote it.
Sounds like a good option to me.
I think the assistant car chief has it?
I saw it, but I lost me, assistant car chief, no.
What's he, what does he generally do with it? Okay, um, that sounds like an option to me, good one.
Well, I will draw a motion and a second, it's been made to, what's that?
Doing that, using the vehicle we already used is great. I wanna go ahead and vote on using this, in case that doesn't work out. I'm not sure how you would work that, but he, we talked to the fire chief, no, we really need that car, we need that truck for our, for the city, so you can't have it, or we'd rather not give it up at this time. I don't wanna wait another week, come back and get a car. So if we work that great, let's do it, if not, well, have this Enterprise deal to call back on. How do I work that, or how do we work that?
We don't have to execute the contract if we don't want to, right? Just because we pass, we say okay?
Correct, just because you're approving it now, doesn't necessarily mean we have to enter into it, it's just if you choose to, it has been approved by council.
That sounds like what you're looking for.
Yes, it does.
So any further discussion? Okay, we'll do it first. Um, yes, as is unanimously. Item six B, discussion of possible action regarding an amendment to the contract with Wyatt Hamilton Finley, EPC. From you have a three-page packet that goes over the, if we want them to continue as interim city attorney. Which were requiring a retainer deposit ten thousand dollars, that's fully refundable, they do not use it.
My little thoughts, aye, or to reject that contract?
I would like to remind y'all that we are up against some shock calls coming up. And this one thousand is only four or three years, you, you'd like to talk more on that?
But if it's not used, then it's returned?
Correct, I pretty much summed it up, it's just a deposit with us, and then whatever hours we build against it, we keep, anything left at the end of the month, it's returned to you, it's unused.
What type of items would you be working on, we talked about a few, how that we've, you. Would you be dealing with the things we talked about executive session, or would you be dealing with only things new that popped up?
Without getting into what was discussed executive session, um, it would be independent items that are pressing matters, um, so, uh, you guys have quite a few, uh, cleaning zoning issues, um, that we're coming up against, and plat reviews, um, some developer agreements, um, things of that nature that just need to be completed, annexation petitions, uh, that need to be published, uh, you know, uh, not, not annexation agreement as part of that needs to be finished up as well. Uh, so it wouldn't be necessarily anything new, it'd be more of just getting you guys, getting these matters closed up without reaching any deadlines. Um, and then if there are issues that come up, you know, before now and then, that you want us to work on, we can do that as well. But my focus would be just to get these other major items wrapped up pretty good.
I think it'd be in the best interest to give the retainer, until the thirtieth, to be done with it. Something that pops up, and probably even ourselves open up for something that might come up. But that's my opinion.
Gives us time to put out the RFP and find someone new, or?
And that doesn't leave us uncovered. They get access until we have a chance to interview, if we choose to change.
Do we have any attorneys, uh, companies that have came and, uh, applied for the position? Any companies?
Sorry, you talking about for the city attorney position?
Yes.
Uh, not that I know of, because RFP hasn't been posted yet, y'all just approved that RFP tonight.
I didn't, we put out a lot of information on different other items, and if anybody's a date, I'm an attorney too, please.
Not that I seen through, you can also ask, uh, Mayor Proton, having who's I know that he's been handling the, the resumes for city administrator and city secretary.
Nothing's going through for a city attorney?
So when, if we approve this, the RFPs is a past, we post them that in TML, and how long will they run that for?
That's up to the council. So my only concern is only till June thirtieth, our next meeting's the twentieth, we won't make a decision by then, and we push our July fourth meeting to July eleventh. So we're still gonna need gap coverage between the thirtieth and the eleventh. If we make a decision.
Uh, I can make a recommendation, uh, if you would like, I can, uh, we can edit the amendment, um, to my stop date would be the same date that you hired a council. That would prevent you from having no council at any point, um, I'm happy to do that.
So, it's fifteen days, or if it's four, five? I'll make another statement.
Nicole, who's gonna be MFC that you're at, please, uh, put us at a time?
I will be your city attorney, and you get to see my shiny things and the big stuff.
So for the retainer deposit, will it stay twenty thousand, or how will that be worked?
Yes, it will.
So I make a motion to accept the contract with Wyatt Hamilton Finley, with the changes that we just discussed, having been opened and ended until we have someone else. Correct, saying the twenty thousand, deposit.
I got a question about a second. So, any discussion? Scotty, if I can, uh, nope, no, no further discussion?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes, yes. As is unanimously, with the changes stated. Six C, discussion of possible action on the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer, candidate, resume submitted to the city, I got the position of city administrator. I would like to close from the table. Motion to close from the table?
Sir.
Got a motion and a second?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, we can close from the table.
People having a hard time hearing this, I think.
Are we all having a hard time hearing this?
Yeah.
Some say yes, some say no.
So last time we did this, we just did an open session, that would be a difference. So we have quite a few resumes to go through. The underneath the red line is all city administrator. From there, all the way down. So I guess we'll just start on the first one.
Are all these gonna include the ones that were provided in our notebook last meeting also, or are these just all the new ones since then?
This is the Tansy one.
You didn't add any after the eleventh, did you?
There was more today. So we have Charlene. No idea how to say that, what it's called, Charlene. Y'all have any chance to look over the ladies?
Yeah, I picked out mine, she's not in there. Unless that's a brand new one that you had today.
No, that's the first one on the list.
Am I email still not working, so, um, I just, well, just, I sent these, the answers, today I was working, and I have a chance to, the ones that were sent me. I do have the ones from last week.
So their professional experience, they were director of talent and learning at the Healthmark Group, human resource director at another healthcare. They were a manager of faculty affairs at Hill College, people operations director, Bridge International. Goes on, on, they have an MBA from Texas Williams University, master of arts in organizational management at Dallas Baptist. And they graduate arts of humanities from Kentucky University.
This is the administrators or city secretary?
City administrator.
City administrator. Did you say that was not born? No.
So they have no municipal government experience, which is something we wanted. They have a master's degree. Don't really explain if they have experience establishing or implementing a budget.
This is gonna be quite the process, if we don't all come to like a common thing that we're looking for. Uh, I personally, if they do not have any city government experience, I would say no. And that's why I narrowed it down quicker, because if they have known municipality experience whatsoever, we can't expect them to step into this position without doing the same thing. Learning, slowly, slowly, we need to find someone that's a strong candidate for the media. That's just not.
I would have loved to narrow these down for y'all, but I was directing not to.
Okay, well, there's a majority votes here, so we all decide later. So if we decide we need a certain guideline, we all agree on, that we're looking for, that will roll out a lot of candidates. But in the time of coming through them, I would like to, since they're, they are tied for two positions, I would like to also look potential candidates for other positions that we may be looking for. At least we can ask them if that would be interesting, because I did see some there that we. Cause I did see somewhere that we get probably positions that we may be looking for also.
Okay, so on this resume.
No.
No.
So should we go down and everybody say yes or no?
Yes, that way we can roll it out.
I don't know. Were you, were you thinking that, oh, sorry, were you thinking that, uh, since this is up on the drive that we can make our choices before we come in? Or would you wanna do this during the evening of that?
I mean, we did it like this last time, remember, every single one. Preferably, I would like for someone narrow down to the top ten by certain guidelines, and it was a death council, but that's not how it was directed, so.
So now the things, things have changed, council, and with the item agenda that we have, agenda item, can we decide to, instead of picking one, can we choose to set a guideline now and then come back with this? Or do we have to be specific and say set guideline?
You can, because the way it's graphing, it talks about all different topics, including evaluation. Uh, so this would fall into an evaluation of your different resumes, and so you could create, uh, what you're specifically looking for. Uh, I can tell you, especially when you have this many, um, that this is a long run out process to work this thing together. Everything y'all can do is do it separately, come in and have your stack of your favorites, see which ones correspond, um, go from there. Uh, or you can just set up a matrix now, um, and if you wanna identify somebody to do that work for you guys, you can do that also. Just kind of how you want to handle the process. I mean, here's, we're a resume again, right? We've collected the resumes, we have them, now you choose what you wanna do with them, and how you think it's gonna be the most efficient way to analyze.
The argument I've been making, see administrator is gonna be a critical position, and I agree with that argument. I mean, that's really critical. What if we look into specialized company headhunter? To find candidates for us. I know it's an expensive process, but it's also a professional position. And maybe these guys and gals that are experienced like this probably aren't looking at TML, NDE, or anything like that for their next position. They might be, in fact, farly tied in with, with a headhunter organization that can say, hey, we've got this city over here that wants you. Is that reasonable?
It is, that's what a lot of larger cities do, they use headhunters.
What about that option? That way, it kinda gets us a narrow focus. Actually, someone else has the focus, but it's their job to find us what we're looking for. And, you know, we're not at the mercy of looking at everybody who's working at Walmart, you know, I mean, I know it's intense. But we need, I think, a professional, a real professional would be a really good idea. Someone with experience and, you know, so we can expand a little more probably. But we sure could use that, in my view.
Nicole, have you ever been involved in that process with a headhunter, expand a little more, like the fees, the percentages?
I'm sorry, say that last part again?
Do you ever been involved in a case where a state's used a headhunter? So that way, we can know better what the fees are, is it like a twenty percent pine or ski? Or what does those headhunting companies charge?
Yeah, we actually just used one for one of our larger clients, um, about six months ago, uh, to find a new city administrator. Um, as far as the actual amount, like dollar amount, I don't have that at the tip of my fingers, but I can give that to you, cause we just did this. I can tell you, it is a long process.
But would you argue that it's worth it?
Uh, I think I get quality candidates.
Like I said, I haven't reviewed all of them, but I reviewed all the ones we were receiving as book. And all of them have red tags. Only because I was looking for someone that had good solid qualifications in municipal development, and I was not able to find. I did find people that were very intelligent, very educated, uh, very capable in a lot of areas of municipal development, plus a lot of their expertise. And with the issues our cities are having now, that we need someone that is very strong in this. That's just my take on it.
And I went to your room and went through and picked out, you know, and I only got eight people that I would even begin to consider, probably four of those. Only because I was assuming that, you know, we're in the death spiral here. But, so, I mean, it's just, we're just not getting the kind of candidates that I'm with this team. MBA, MBA, see a lot of that, that's great, but, you know, algebra one math teacher with an MBA, alright, it's just, uh...
Kathleen, is this something that we again have in the budget, uh, to be, I mean, I know we don't have a figure, and we could go with the C, is something that is affordable?
I guess that would kind of depend on how much it is.
Well, maybe we can find the option and get with you, and then maybe we can find out if there's possible.
Yes, we have that information ready for the next agenda. I know that y'all have a meeting next Tuesday. Um, so at the very least, y'all have agenda item, uh, to at least discuss that option. Where we give you the option to actually vote on that, to go for the headhunter, put on an RFP for headhunter, pick a headhunter. We actually have an agenda item that's drafted, so you can take the action you need.
How long is this going to extend it out? How much time is this gonna take us?
I can only give you an example that I have was recently. Um, our city administrator let us know he was leaving in May. And we finished up the process in December.
How large was the city?
Quite large.
Does that make a difference?
Uh, yes, I think so, because of the job requirements are much more than they would see in a city besides. I don't anticipate it being as long and drawn out for you guys. Um, if that's a route you took, I think it would probably be short to maybe three months at most. But again, I'm just speculating at this point.
Three months is not bad. Three months is not, is not bad, it's true. That's when you've already got six months behind you, it makes nine months. Well, that also means we've got, you know, a lot of stuff needs to be handled, and we need somebody that's not coming to Walmart.
Well, that's true. That's the way they did it at Walmart.
Changing oil with a firecrack.
Is the envelope that we received, does that make it public, public?
No, I was gonna do that.
Well, I've got, you know, like I said, I've got one, two, three, four, five, something like that.
So I'm gonna look at yours and then see if there's anything that the rest of us like.
I got Gerald Williams, wait a second. Yeah, he's mayor of town of White House, ultimate city councilman. But, uh, community economic development specialist, two years, now he's an algebra one math teacher in intervention at an academy, inspired charter academy. But he has, and he's out of Louisiana. He has, um, some experience. That'd be one guy, that would want to be out.
So let's, let's discuss this one before we move on. So currently, he's a math teacher, he was the community economic development specialist. He was the mayor.
I think he did some grant writing too, and I like that.
So he has government experience, he was a city councilman. He's got an MBA. Master of Public Administration, Public Policy, Public Finance, Human Resource Management.
Shows he also has good administrative experience.
Named to whose who under America's mayors. And he's a certified life coaching motivational speaker, he can give us tips. Make us all go home.
So what does he?
Headored of Excellence in Financial Reporting, Government Finance, Officers Association. Or are we still just gonna go to the headhunter?
Uh, I am, I just, I just would really like to get somebody in here that wants what they're doing. And who's not currently an educator, not an assistant teacher.
I'm gonna have to stay out here.
So we get a motion for that or just direction, but yeah.
Just director for staff that will put it on for your next agenda.
Well, wouldn't have to have a RFP for that, address for page, address for proposal, you go through all that and...
Uh, it'll depend on how much the headhunter costs. Uh, like I said, let me touch base, I'll give the numbers for you, um, and then I'll have better advice next week.
So is that the direction we all, so I'll give them?
Yeah, I mean, this is our, so.
So, do we need to officially table signing until next meeting?
I would.
Make motion to table item sixteen, till next. There's a play, will be, right?
Two twenty.
Two twenty, table for two twenty.
How second?
I have a motion and a second table to get on to June twentieth.
Yes.
Uh, yes, pass it to hand, this way. Item six, uh, discussion national, the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of public officer. Candidate resume submitted to the city agony for the position of city secretary. I make a motion to remove this from the table.
Second.
Motion and second.
Uh, yes.
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 Yes. Remove from the table. Okay. So we have about the same amount of application signature for city secretary.
Does it make, do they do city secretary's team?
Uh, it is possible, I'm sure Lizzy never forgot.
I found nine. One vote is actually has been a city secretary. I don't think this has had a chance to look through.
I haven't looked it all over myself. I would assume table this limit, me, and do not go through a headhunter through this, get it over with. If we find a suitable candidate and go on this meeting.
So should we all pay?
More of a table this till next week, I would say. But then we need to finish it next week, we need to go through it tomorrow and get to the mode on this, this is not going to happen.
Yes, sir.
We're gonna do this, that shows we done with it.
Yes, sir.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, can we, what, we wanna get like ten each and bring that table? And then we'll narrow it for those ten, or do we want to set a limit of each one take the five?
Minimum five. If you wanna do more, that's fine, but the minimum of five.
Plus, whatever two months came up today, did you look at, you did. You did look at, was there anything that I could?
So you want to look at it next meeting?
Everybody drink ten. Narrow it down.
What happens whenever these people are like our city administrator applications last time, and they're like, uh, already kind of out of job?
True. If I wanna do it, we're done with it.
So let's say each of us find the same, like we would, that we're all made, choose the same ones, or slims in that, we might have a couple overlap, but we're still gonna have to look at a majority of these resumes. There's five of us up here, that's potentially twenty-five to fifty resumes.
So what are you offering for a solution? Often, often a solution.
I mean, we're here, we might as well approve them.
Okay.
But that's just my discussion. If there's no further discussion, we'll take a note to table it till next meeting, you not use a headhunter. Given direction, then we will choose five to ten. You can have that next week.
So there's a motion for, there's a second?
I'm just a second discussion, you know, we're good.
Uh, I'll go through it tonight, if you wanna go through it tonight, that was your argument.
Yeah, our motion is to table the item until next week. Sorry, I dropped my mic.
Go, Mel, it's not me.
Yes. I agree.
I will promote my own motion.
Who seconded it?
So, the item new.
Who seconded the motion? So, Kathleen, did you second the motion and?
I don't know. Oh, did I?
How you break a tie with a tiebreaker? You don't?
Motion down.
Let's go through.
So, before we do that, I want to just show y'all where it was advertised. TMCA finally cleared up, took them a little while, this Texas Municipal Clerks Association. It was put on LinkedIn, city agony website. Alright, so we got it there. Uh, so let's go on TML and then NDE. The minimum education and experience we posted was an associate's degree in public administration, business administration, libraries, science, records management, or closely related field. Five years' experience in the order of training of the city secretary, or any combination of related education, experience certifications, licenses. And in the basic knowledge of officer, computers, municipal elections, record retention laws. They are required to have a municipal clerk certification or must within a year of hire. They are required to have a municipal clerk certification or must attend within a year of hire. Though the Republic, same thing, six months. And we prefer TMCCP certification experience with municipal elections. So when we go through those, that's what we're looking for. Of all that.
I found one.
Do you go through each one of these individually? This is just some of them. We'll be here till midnight. And I, I mean, I still go back to, I don't want to make a motion, so we can bring ten back to the next meeting and all narrow this down. Because we're going to heat up all night, and they're going to be sitting out here while we just literally come through each individual application. It is our job to try to narrow down, to bring back to them potential candidates that are worth looking at. That's my thought.
So make a motion.
So I'll make a motion that we bring back ten, each one of us, to go over and see our top candidates to compare at the next meeting.
So you're making a motion to table till the June twentieth meeting? The direction for each council member to narrow down ten and bring it back?
Yes.
Motion, and a second?
Oh, second.
Got a motion and a second?
Well, I'm trying to change my reputation and be real, so I.
Yes.
Yes.
Give me my change.
Yes. I have a message to add, so. To table till the June twentieth meeting, take direction. Six G, discussion of possible action on negotiating contracts to or with the city.
Is this one too general? Well, it, it just needs to go, so.
Do you have maybe some guidelines of what you wanted to do with this one, so that we can, we can table it and then maybe we can amend the agenda item for next one?
It's just not necessary anymore. I don't think.
Okay, so no action, we can decide on it.
There you go with that, no action thing again.
It's not in here. Okay, yeah, I, uh, whatever we need to do, be ready.
So no action. Item six H, discussion of possible actions regarding financial transaction procedures in the city.
Same thing with this one.
No action?
Right.
Discussion of possible action to ratify or fill voidable votes taken by previous council member, Andrew Thompson. Table for the June sixth meeting. Make a motion to bring this item from the table.
Second.
Got a motion and a second?
What are you doing? More of your motion?
Bring the item from the table so we can talk about it.
Oh, okay. Let's do that.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. As a unanimous way, bring back from this table.
By discussion of this, I do not want to go back to your vote on all this. We don't have to, a little hours spending. If anybody ever comes up with a next time limit that it has, and we can vote, we can decide at that point if, uh, want it, or vote that they want to redo, but as far as it goes, what's voted on is been voted on and spaced that way.
So we need to go into executive session for this to cover, when we get it done.
Um, if you're seeking legal advice from the attorney, then I recommend we go into executive session.
Is there any, can y'all have a nice discussion, open session before we go into executive session?
Can we discuss after we do that, or make a session? I mean, as long as we don't talk about what we talked about in executive session, if we have to make a motion, we can do it after, right?
Correct, you can go actually in section, so any action would be, would happen in the open.
So at this time, we'll adjourn into executive session twenty-two thirty-nine, two-two thirty-nine. Verse, section five-five-one dot zero seven-one, consultation with attorney.
If only there was a coffee shop in here too.
Hurry up, Michael. Hurry up, let's go.
You know, our overtime is twenty minutes, I gotta get in there, so.
Michael, how do we get a vending machine in our lobby?
Yeah, I'd like to, I wonder what it looks like.
This is what it looks like, that's, see all those trucks coming in?
Yeah.
That was the turn of the market. There's a duck, it does, I'll tell you that, right there. Yeah, that's where they're going to go, and that's, that was the market.
We're going to convene and open session at twenty-three forty-seven. Is there any further discussion? So at this point, we're going to table this item. And we will instruct staff to start pooling the minutes to revisit the items, to see which items will need to be revisited. So we need all the minutes pooled, and I'll talk to A J, how we can put those in empty in the week, so make it easier. So we will revisit this at the June twentieth. I made a motion to table the side of the June twentieth, get those directions.
Second.
Got a motion and a second?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, motion passed unanimously. Item seventeen, the interest items.
Sorry, did one did you say we were naming that to?
June twentieth. On June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, I, James Stacy McEagie, the third, do hereby submit my resignation as mayor of the city agave in Texas. I thank those who have encouraged me or referred this to this. This does not mean that he is resigned. We have to take action at our June twentieth meeting for eight days. At eight days, it will become effective. Anybody else have any, can we continue this items?
Uh, maybe after that, they, I don't know, so that, uh, this chair that are out there and. There's some, they're all kind of hard, I think those are retract. We'll get back. Two checks, no. They're just taking a space, but they're flicking all of them.
Motion to adjourn?
Got a motion, and a second?
Second.
So I.
Yes.
Uh, yes. Adjourned at twenty-three fifty, to three thousand here.
Sing right back. Mayor did the talking, but.